...pronounce that to the best grade tonight.
Oh, and if people are not aware, the state will be spraying for the mosquitoes tonight. I believe they start at seven to four in the morning. You can go on the website and hook up with the Mass., Central Mass. Mosquito Control and also the state for more detailed information.
Okay. I'm going to close my windows. I don't know about anybody else, but I think it's a good idea.
Well, the most important thing is to-
Not be outdoors.
Not to be outdoors, period, whatever day it is. Address properly for it. Okay, we have seven minutes, so why don't we jump down to town administrators?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things this evening. Sturbridge Auto Sales, we've been discussing their bond. Automobile dealers in Massachusetts are required to post a bond with the host municipality that issues the license. Their bond has been expired, revoked, and they need to get a new one by tomorrow, or we notify the state of Massachusetts that their dealer's license is forfeit. So I've been in conversations with the owner for the past week or so. He is in the process of getting a new bond. I should have it tomorrow. So if not, then we'll have to make the appropriate notifications regarding his dealer's license. At the last meeting, Board Member Supernaut asked me about a dog park and a representative. Annie Raciolli has taken that on, so she will be our front person on the dog park. Also received an email from the Sturbridge Rotary. I guess we have an exchange of greetings between Sturbridge and Stourbridge, U.K., for the past thirty years. So they are looking for a proclamation sometime-
No caller.
Oh, sorry. Sometime in October, probably at our October 1st meeting in October, we'll have a proclamation. I guess you've adopted this before?
Yes, every year we do. There should be a copy.
Right.
And what we do is we vote on it, and then Klaus Hochfeld picks it up and he mails it, and then he has a Skype with the Rotary Club in Stourbridge-
Yep.
-to his house, so.
So that'll be coming up at your next meeting in October.
We're still waiting for a representative to go in here and deliver, right?
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
Jeff can put it in budget. We can make a motion tonight and get it out of the way, because I know Klaus always likes it early.
Mm-hmm. That's up to you. We have not prepared the proclamation, so if you want to go ahead, it's up to you all.
Well, we can just say, "Motion to approve the proclamation similar to what we have written for the past thirty years."
Okay.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
All right, well, we'll get it made up for signature. And that's all I had this evening, unless there's any questions on anything.
Any questions on those? Okay, the action items. The, there's a request to concur with the appointment of Pearl Lutter as a part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department.
And Ms. Lutter is here this evening?
Could you please come down? You can sit at the mic. Okay, good evening. Would you like to tell us a little bit about you? Also, this is basically for the people at home.
Sure. My name is Pearl Lutter. I was born and raised in Kenya. I moved here six years ago, and I'm a criminal justice major in Anna Maria College in hopes of becoming a police officer. And being a dispatcher is one way I would love to be, one. It's closer to being a police officer, but also helping the community, so that's all about.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I do. It's not a question. It's, I'm very proud to see her here tonight. I had her as a student not too long ago at Quinn Siggelman, and she was a stellar student, and I'm sure she'll do very well at her job, and I'm so happy to see you here.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I see your student, Anna Maria.
Correct.
And that's another very good school as well, and I encourage you to stay in your criminal justice pursuit, because it could, it will bring a really good career in the future.
Okay, is somebody willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we concur with the appointment of Pearl Lutter as part-time dispatcher at a starting rate of $20.80 per hour effective 9/17/2019.
Geez, is there a second?
Sec. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck and welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We have an additional, an item of another hire, so-
Yes. Okay, we also have, as soon as I find it again, another request for concurrence with the appointment of Christine Boebel as the administrative assistant-
If I could just for the board for just a second.
Oh.
I'm the chairman of criminal justice at Anna Maria College, and I want to extend my sincerest appreciation to this board for the partnership that we have with Sturbridge Police and your leadership. This young lady is a 4.0 student and one of the rising stars in our program, and we're all very proud of her, and I just wanted to, on behalf of President Vitella, Anna Maria College, thank the board for giving her this terrific opportunity for this fantastic town.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry I wasn't looking up.
No, thank you very much.
She's too humble. She didn't tell us she had a 4.0.
Yeah.
She is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a request for concurrence with the appointment of Christine Boebel as the administrative assistant for the Department of Public Works, which-
We had thirty-one applicants.
Wow.
A lot of good talent, a lot of experience. Christine is one of the better ones, and she has a lot of experience in office, and had great references, and she's accepted the position, so we'd like to have your concurrence on it, if you have any questions for Christine.
Okay, Christine, would you come down, please? Good evening. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have another one. This is a twofer tonight for me. She's another student I had at Bay Path University, and she was an outstanding student, very professional always, and always gave above and beyond what was ever expected. So I'm happy to see you apply for this, and I'm happy to see you will be appointed, assuming will be appointed to this position. And to boot, you're also from Sturbridge, too, so that's good.
Yes.
But I know you'll do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
I just happen to know that the position that you're going into, you need tough skin, you know.
Yes.
And I appreciate it, and just a word of advice, just, you know, not everybody's going to be a nice to you, but in general, it's very rewarding knowing that the whole Department of Public Works is, you know, is trying to make the community better, and so just, as you, when you do get those tough phone calls, just remember to breathe easy, keep calm.
They're going to scare her off.
Why not point her?
She should know what she's getting into.
Butch did you warn her?
And Butch probably warned her already. Butch knows.
That's true. Public service in general, you need thick stuff.
Yeah. But it's not always easy, so.
Right.
She can handle it.
I'm sure.
Okay, is anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to appoint Christine Boebel to the position of administrative assistant for the Department of Public Works.
Oh, wait, you do it this time.
I don't have that.
Oh, nineteen sixty-four per hour?
At nineteen sixty-four per hour effective tomorrow.
Um, I don't know. Christine, do you have to give two weeks' notice before?
Yes, I do.
So whatever the-
The date?
No, thirty, you said, Christine?
Yeah, it would start on the thirtieth of September.
Effective September 30th, 2019.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
I didn't mean to scare you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, Miss Miller.
Okay, six thirty-five, we do have a public hearing.
Can I make one quick announcement?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, Sam Evans is here this evening, Samantha. She'll be filling in for Andrea while Andrea's out.
Out.
She's here this evening, just introduce yourself and get familiar with the board.
See what happens? Good. We won't scare you off, I hope. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike, do you have the-
Oh, yes, I had it here a second ago. It's on the back of one of these pages here. Oh, not that page. This one? No. There's too much paper here. I got it. Okay. The ad is, "Town of Stourbridge, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 132, Section 40 through 46, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Stourbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of..."
That's the second one.
That's the wrong one. What had all the poll petitions? Let me go back this way.
Here it is.
Okay. Town of Stourbridge, National Grid and Verizon have made a joint petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to relocate three joint occupied poles on Haynes Street, beginning at a point approximately 110 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Haynes Street and Mashplague Road, and continuing approximately 300 feet in a northeast direction. National Grid to relocate pole numbers P-124, 123, and 122 and 1/2, or 122, to approximately four feet off the roadway to provide new pole configuration for development of 234 Haynes Street. The poll hearing will take place on Monday, September 16th, at 6:35 p.m. at the Stourbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Stourbridge, Mass.
Okay, and could you please identify yourself?
My name is Jeff Silver, and I work for National Grid.
Okay, and just a quick synopsis of-
Quick synopsis is, we'll actually be moving poles from 126 to 122, but a lot of, some of it is state layout, and your layout is based on these pole lines, so we're trying to get everything closer to the road, so it's easier for us to work.
Okay, now it says for development of 234, is that the new convenience?
The old Roy Rogers?
Yeah.
God bless you.
Thank you. I stifle it, but thank you, you noticed.
It's not good for you.
I know, I know.
Any questions from the board?
On, part of the pole relocations on the state highway layout, you said?
Yes.
And Mass. standard distance off the edge of pavement is six feet, and on the town section of the roadway, you're going to, can you keep that six foot off the edge of pavement?
We're going to try to keep them lined up so that we don't have to anchor and guy anything.
Yeah.
The State Department is aware of where the poles are going to go, and they haven't told me anything different from where they're going to go now. The minimum is four feet. It is going to shift back and forth depending on how straight that line is.
But the State Highway Department requires a minimum of six feet off the edge of pavement.
I did not know that, but I can make that adjustment.
Location.
That's easy to make.
Yeah, so I, you know, if you-
I appreciate the knowledge, because I didn't know that.
Yeah, but, so, you know, if you can keep it six feet off the edge of pavement, because this is, you know, cars travel through here at, what, 45 miles an hour or something?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. That's not a problem.
That extra couple of feet may-
Save a life. It's possible.
Maybe safer, I would say.
No, that's easily, easily a tamble.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to change the order to read six feet on the order for the joint pole location, because it reads four feet right now.
I can change it to six feet. That's easy.
I think there's plenty of room there.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of room.
And actually, a couple of years ago, on Mashplague Road, there was, the former DPW director had some issues with the poles being too close to the edge of pavement along Mashplague Road, so if we can, if we can do the six feet.
The problem that might occur further down the road is, a lot of those existing poles are already four to four and a half feet off the road.
I understand, so you might have to bring it in slightly as you, you know, get closer to that pole line, you'll have to-
Correct, correct.
You'll have to, you know, one might be five feet, then the next one, four feet.
Correct.
Whatever.
Just got to work the angle, that's all it is.
They have to be lined up in a straight line.
Try to, at least.
We just ask you do the best you can.
It's what I do every day.
Yeah, no, we do understand there are some problems with the roads.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from the board? Okay, it is a poll hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment or a question? Okay, is there a motion then to close the poll hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you. Have a fantastic evening.
Okay, we do have time, so we can go back to the-
We can have a motion to approve it, though?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not even eight o'clock. Is there a motion?
Not even seven.
I know. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Subject to the six feet.
Yeah, subject to the six feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we do have time, so the action item B, repair of tennis courts at Cedar Street Recreation Area. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given our options, I think we should go ahead and take Lynch's proposal to, you know, cover half, unless we want to back up and redo the entire court probably in the spring and use a better specification for the mix. The issue we're having, there was no specifications in the asphalt, which would have prevented the rusting issue, so if we want to repair them most expeditiously with the potential for new spots coming up in the future, take up Lynch's proposal to redo the surface for half. If we want to redo the whole thing, that's probably a springtime project, and we wouldn't do anything this year.
Right, and any ballpark number?
It would be similar to what we did before, because you'd have to-
Yeah, but I mean-
I don't know, we probably want to do concrete. I mean, the original plans called for concrete, they flipped it to asphalt at the last minute, and I think that's what caused kind of the lack of specificity on the product.
If we, Mary? Yes, thank you. If we chose to redo the whole thing in the spring properly with the right material, is Lynch willing to make a contribution to that?
I have no idea.
You know, that's the thing. Right now, they're contributing half, correct, to the, for the repair?
For the repair.
For the asphalt, I get it, but, you know, it'd be, obviously it'd be nice to have the concrete in the spring, but I don't want to lose Lynch's contribution to the repair either if we had to-
Well, and we'd probably have to go back to town meeting for the money.
Right, of course. We should repair it.
So we should repair it.
Okay, is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Lynch Construction to split the cost of repairing and resurfacing the tennis courts at the Cedar Street Recreation Area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Eighty-five to nothing. Okay, next we have the adoption of the update to the Town of Stourbridge National Hazard Mitigation. Okay, could you all introduce yourselves, please, for the record in the audience?
Thomas Ford, Chief of Police, Emergency Management Director.
Peter Falcone, Associate Planner, Central Mass. Regional Planning Commission.
Kevin Filczak, Emergency Management Coordinator, Town of Stourbridge.
Okay, Jeff?
Through CMR PC and the Town's Emergency Management Committee, LEPC, our natural hazard mitigation plan has been updated, and we are here this evening. I think they, we had you out a couple of months ago, talked about status and process. That plan has been completed. The ninety-something page documents in your packet this evening talks about what our potential risk factors are for various natural hazards, floods, hurricanes. I think there's a couple of climate change issues in there, so at this point, we'd like to have the plan adopted, and that'll be our hazard mitigation plan, and they recommend a five-year refresh on these types of plans.
Okay, now, we updated the membership, didn't we, a while ago?
Yes. And graciously made me the chair. Thank you.
Have to earn your money somehow.
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments on it from the board?
And perhaps Kevin and CMR PC has some comments.
Yeah. Okay.
I would just add to that, that the idea behind the hazard mitigation plan is to reduce the loss of life and property throughout the town. It's also kind of a plan that gives a roadmap for the town to break the cycles of disaster response, disaster response. We're looking to mitigate those hazards. Really can't eliminate 100% fully a natural disaster, but what we can try to do is eliminate the, eliminate or lessen the impacts of the disaster. One thing that I want to add to is, with the current plan, it makes the town eligible for pre-disaster mitigation grants, flood mitigation assistant grants, along with hazard mitigation planning grants. So the idea to keep in that plan current is that you're, it makes you eligible for all these grant monies. And I would add to that, the state grants are a great tool to use to get some of the planning done, or engineering studies, or permitting, things of like, things of that nature, so that when you do apply for a pre-disaster mitigation grant, flood mitigation, or hazard mitigation, you have a lot of the legwork done, and that way, when you go for the, apply for their grant, you'll be shovel-ready or close to shovel-ready for a big grant from the Feds, or FEMA, excuse me.
Okay, Kevin, anything?
No, I would, the only thing I would add would be that the process to get this plan updated, it was very helpful for us, you know, having restarted the LEPC after a few years of inactivity, so it was good to use this as a way to discuss a lot of those natural hazards that we need to talk about, and I think the process has been helpful, and CMR PC has done a very good job with the plan.
Just, because I know it's such a long document, are there any, like, significant changes from our previous plan that's worth highlighting for us, or?
I think one of the, for, a lot of the, we went through and looked at all of the hazards that we identified back in 2012, I believe, yeah, 2012, and, you know, gave a status update, our, you know, is it still an ongoing project? Did we, have we mitigated this successfully? And we've added a few new ones, for instance, the gypsy moth issue was one that we brought up, that we've since added this year, and that's been recognized by this, by this town as a major issue. Other big one, that's one sticking out of my mind.
Yeah, that's, that kind of sticks out of my mind, too. A lot of things were continuations, or updates, or improvements, you know, that are kind of ongoing. You don't really have, like, a solid, concrete ending for a lot of things in this mitigation plan. There are some where it's more of an infrastructure project that would, you know, replace the culvert and turn it into a box culvert, or a nature base type of culvert that's three-sided with the natural base, but some of them is like inventorying shelters, continually updating those, the supplies at a shelter, the resources we have within arms' reach, or MOUs that are in place, kind of, what are the effects of, if the tornado takes out this shelter, what's the backup plan, or how do we reroute to the other shelter, things, things like that, where there's not really an end-all, be-all, it's more of an ongoing, living, kind of, continually update and rethink strategies versus this is the end-all, be-all to solve all the problems. I'm not sure if that's feasible.
And if we could add to that, you know, those are items that we think about fairly consistently, and, you know, the chief and I have been updating the scent plan, so some of those items that he just mentioned are things that we think about every year, and we try to make sure are being covered in our local plans.
Okay, board? Mike?
Yeah, I was at the quarterly meeting where this, the hazard mitigation plans were discussed, and also there was a presentation on municipal vulnerability plan, which is, which will be completed very shortly by CMR PC, and the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Plan, will also open the town up for additional funding to address our vulnerability to some similar hazards that we have here. It's a, it's a different approach, and this, the hazard mitigation goes through MEMA and FEMA-
Correct.
-where municipal vulnerability is administered through, what state agency?
Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA.
So I just wanted to bring up, there is some synergy or relationship between the two plans, and, so, I just brought it up, so I wouldn't get confused.
Oh, it's helpful for me.
Yeah, but, you know, both things are going on at the same time. Both plans are being finalized just about the same time, which is good, because we'll have two up-to-date plans that address potential hazards of the town and our vulnerability to, to all kinds of different situations.
Okay, anything else from the board? Somebody willing to make a motion then to adopt the update?
I'll make a motion to update, to adopt the updated hazard mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to one. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Do we, it just, do we have to sign the certification of adoption?
Yes.
Yes, when?
It'll just need to go on the town's-
We'll get it clean.
Yeah, we just need it on the town's letterhead, signed by the board, and I'll insert it into the plan and then send it back to FEMA for final approval.
Yes, it's not good without a signature. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have old business before we get to the topic listed. Priscilla, do you have any old?
No.
Chase?
No.
Mike?
Not tonight.
Mary?
No.
I just had the question about the latest update from DEP on McGilpin Road.
I will have to track that down.
Yeah, because I know it's been, if not this December, a year ago December, I think was our last update.
More than six months.
Yeah, so it was when Leon was here, so it's been, it's been a while.
I know they've been testing, though.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten any report. They said they'd keep us updated, therefore we can update the residents.
Yeah.
Okay, did you get a chance to get back to Mrs. Williams on Charter?
Not yet. I put a call into the rep we had with Charter. It looks like that person's no longer there, so I've got to track down a new person. There is a senior citizens discount included in the franchise, but it's very onerous to apply for that, and it only covers basic services, so if you wanted a premium channel, it wouldn't be applicable.
Yeah, no, we went through that when we updated the thing, and they don't give much.
No.
no matter how much you push. Okay, but when you, yeah.
Absolutely, when I get a new person to talk to, I'll update Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, okay. Well, the next one's gonna take a while, so we can wait two minutes before our public hearing, scheduled at seven.
Any new business?
No. New business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
Do you have something, there's a resident on the Roston Road that has contacted me, she's very upset about a gravel operation going on at Roston House, and she's been complaining of a lot of trucks coming in and out, and she wanted to make sure that they were compliant with the bylaws, so I, I'll bring it up here. She said she's contacted the town, contacted the building sector, and she's very upset, so I just want to make sure that everything is legal over this.
Yes, we made him pull the necessary permits. Uh, the bylaw states that you can remove product, or remove material in preparation for the building of a principal structure. So, to that effect, we made him pull his building permit to build a house. Until that time, he was going with a driveway, he pulled a driveway permit and other things. So, he's moving a lot of material.
That's what she says.
Yeah, he's moving a lot of material. So, eventually, he'll build a house, but he did pull the permit and pay for the permit to comply with the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
It's seven o'clock, huh?
Well, you can be late, but you can't be early. Might as well finish new.
Okay, I do not have any new business.
Okay, Mary?
Um, no.
And I don't either, so it is seven, Mike.
Okay. Now, I gotta get back to the one I was reading before. What's coming from? Okay. This is, I'll reread this. It's Town of Sturbridge, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 132, Section 40 through 46, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of Michael J. Bartlett for a logging permit for 57 acres of land on 119 Holland Road and 224B Holland Road, owned by Mark D. and Joseph R. in Ward C. and Kevin J. Palmer. The hearing will be held on Monday, September 16th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay, is the proponent here, could you please come down?
Mike Bartlett, Forester from Hull Forest Products, and I'm representing Hull Forest Products in this application.
Okay. Okay, could you briefly explain what it is you're going to do, or want to do?
Uh, we're planning on doing a timber harvest. Their objective was to salvage a significant amount of trees that have died from gypsy moss, droughts, so forth, in recent years. Approximately two-thirds of the harvest is on the golf course side of the road, or the northwest side of the road, I guess I should say, and the other third is on the, the other side of the road, opposite, so...
Okay, and you do have your state forest cutting plan certificate?
Yes, that's been approved.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, we have a letter from the Conservation Department. They do not have any concerns with the forestry activities. Does a construction entrance tracking pad shall be established on-site as necessary?
Right, on the, across from the golf course there, there's an entrance to the field that they mow, I believe, annually, but it's not appropriate for getting the log trucks off the road, so there, we do plan on putting in rip raft. That site is a little wet, so to speak, so our plan is to use crane mats for the log trucks to get to the spot where the logs will be yarded.
Right, because the DPW director also suggested crushed stone pad.
Right, 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 right. And planning on using large rip raft there to...
And protection for the edge of the road, too.
Right.
Comments or questions from the board? Mike?
Um, as, as part of our permit, we ask that, that you coordinate with our school buses, and Holland Road happens to be also used heavily by our neighboring town of Holland, and I would ask that you also coordinate with the Holland School Bus thing, so that there's no conflict there.
Right.
Okay, and we do have a stipulation on the hours, too?
Mm-hmm.
And also $50,000 bond?
$50,000?
Fifty.
I'm not familiar with it.
I thought it was five.
Five.
Yeah.
We've had a $5,000 bond.
Oh, well, we need it.
We have had a $5,000...
All ones.
We've probably had a $5,000 in play, bond in place consistently for about 15 years in the Town of Sturbridge, so...
Right, you do a lot. Okay, what else do we have on the, I didn't bring my list?
Yeah, no, in the future, because we do have a list of stipulations, you know, dawn to dusk, only certain hours.
Yeah, are you familiar that that is in violation of state statute?
In what way?
In that you cannot regulate hours of agricultural activities.
We've, well, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna agree or disagree, but this has, this issue hasn't come up before. We've, we've regulated hours of operation, because we also don't have anything on Sundays.
Right.
Or on holidays, and no forester has ever...
I, I agree.
...commented upon that. So, I'm not gonna, I, I'm not in a position to agree or disagree, but we should check with council, because we have a list of stipulations, and I was about to say, in the future, what we've typically done with the forestry plan is that you, you add it to our agenda. It should be in our policy book, because we always have the same stipulations, and eventually, we just put it all on paper.
Right.
Uh, but if that's the case, we'll have to look into it. But I'm just saying, that's always been, and nothing on Sunday.
Right, I understand that.
Nothing on holidays.
Right.
And Saturdays, I believe, it was noon only, so...
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if this, are you saying the state law prohibits a municipality from having a more stringent bylaw or policy?
Correct.
We'd have to see that, and I'd like to see that in, from our council.
That's pretty standard across the country.
Yeah, we've never run into it.
We've never run into any comment about it, that's why I...
Well, the town did receive a letter from our attorney, maybe two years ago, when we were working on South Road, and there, I understand the town's, you know, objectives here and issues with that. And there, it was a case where people were showing up, you know, five minutes before the time, or going out, leaving with their personal vehicles five minutes after the time, and neighbors getting upset, stopping them in the road, you're in violation of the town bylaw. I understand, we'll, we've worked with the town in a very reasonable manner for a long time, you know, I've been through this process many, many times. I've been with Hull for 41 years, been here many times. We have never had any significant issues that I'm aware of. That was probably the most significant a couple of years ago, and there was a letter sent to the Chief of Police and the Town Manager at that time.
And I just want to clarify, it's not a bylaw, it was a policy of the town.
Yeah.
And we were under the impression that we could regulate hours of operation, so it's worth clarifying...
Well, part of your right to farm, uh...
It's worth, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna try to get you, I don't know, it's worth, it's worth getting a definitive answer on that.
Sure, right, sure, we can do that.
Does the, does the board's right to control nuisance supersede that, if there is a nuisance? I don't know.
I think there's certain exceptions when it comes to agricultural activities.
Yeah, there are, there are some exceptions, but, but...
Like, we want to work with you, I mean, it's not...
No, I mean, it's always worked out, though. We, you know, we do it for the neighbors, because they have been...
Right, I understand.
A few occasions, not with Hull, but, you know, people show up an hour earlier, sun's not quite up.
Yes, I understand.
It's pretty annoying.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Anyone in the audience? It's a public hearing. Okay, could you please come up and use the mic, it's for the people at home?
Yeah.
Okay, and could you give your name, please?
Yeah, my name is John Cowett, in Allen Hill Road. I'm new to this, so, I, I have a few concerns, lot lines, how, how do we know, or how do they know where they're gonna be cutting? Has that been surveyed, and that sort of thing?
Yeah, you can...
The boundaries have been flagged, the trees that are to be harvested have been painted with paint.
Oh, okay.
And so, I guess if you feel there's an issue, please let me know, but the lines, as we found them, were matched the maps that we have, there's physical evidence in terms of barbed wire, old stone rail fences, and so forth, and pins on the corners, and so...
Yeah, 'cause I've been out there, it's really thick, the wood's really thick in there, so...
Well, if you didn't see any blue paint on your property, we're not...
Well, not recently, anyway.
And that's why we notify the abutters, is to give them a change.
Is there any impact as far as wetlands and that sort of thing?
There are wetland crossings on the jobs that have been used before, in previous harvest, that we plan to use the crane mats, again, to protect the integrity of those crossings.
And, so, you're just gonna individually cut, you're not gonna clear-cut the whole thing, then?
Correct, there are spots where in certain, you know, one particular acre, the vast majority of the trees are dead, so in those cases, we're gonna cut them.
Cut them off, yeah.
But, no, we're not clear-cutting by what would be, in forestry terms, clear-cutting.
Okay, that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, somebody willing to make a motion?
No.
I'll make a motion to give a logging permit to 119 Holland Road and 224B Holland Road, Michael J. Bartlett.
Second?
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to know if it's subject to the conditions we've always imposed.
Yeah, it should be.
Perhaps, and being told that we can't...
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five zero.
And maybe you can make a copy for Mr. Bartlett of our conditions? I think it's in our policy book.
Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, because it isn't a bylaw.
No, but we finally put it, we pulled them together instead of trying to...
So, we're consistent with one...
Remember them all the time.
Did that include coordination with Holland?
Oh, it's their motion, so...
What? I didn't hear it.
Mike also wants to add, not just our bus coordinator, but Holland, so we can put that on.
Ask, I asked them to coordinate with...
Yeah, they coordinate with the Holland bus.
Coordinate with the school buses, so that there's no conflict between logging trucks and school buses. Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of students.
Right, right.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, in light with this, I know it's not, it's just the conver, no, you're all set. The conversation that came up about state rules and regs and whatever, agricultural and whatever, okay, so I guess I have another question is, in this case, how can we do conservation rules that are more stringent than the state conservation rules?
Well, I mean, he's not talking conservation, he's talking farming.
I understand that, I understand that, but if we can't impose a policy on, on that, I guess my question now becomes, how can we do it on something else, or can we? I guess while you're asking...
You can go stricter than the state, you can't go less stricter than the state, like our current test.
So, this is stricter in a sense?
Yeah, but this, this is agriculture, which is exempt from most things.
And we don't know if he's correct.
We don't know, I know, I know.
Yeah.
I think the key is, it's an agricultural operation, and they have special treatment under the laws in most states.
Yes.
So, it's different than if you wanted to build a subdivision, or if you wanted to build a commercial property. Agriculture has its own set of rules.
Okay.
But we will get some information from KP Law.
But, but there, there is substantial, if an agricultural operation is creating a public nuisance, that is most likely not, in most cases, it's not exempt. If, you cannot create by agricultural activity a public nuisance.
It depends on the nature of the public nuisance. Aerial spraying is usually exempt.
Right.
Dust is usually exempt. Those things are inherent to an agricultural operation.
But operating equipment and hours where...
Depends on, I, having worked in, having worked in agricultural states, I, I get it, I don't, not familiar with Massachusetts right to farm law.
This was the first, yeah, this was the first that anyone in, at least since I've been sitting here, to my recollection, has challenged our regulation of hours.
I agree. I will find out.
So, we need to get the information.
Yeah.
Okay, we're still under new business, uh, old business, sorry, sewer extension. Jeff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Board. We have a proposal from the owner of Pine Lake RV Park regarding a sewer extension down Route 15. Mr. Moreau is here this evening. As I put in the packet, there's a number of issues here. There is, the original proposal for Mr. Moreau was to build an onsite sewage treatment plant, and that's what was approved. He has his DEP permits, and that is, is in design. He approached the town five or six weeks ago about a direct connection to the line in Farquhar Road through a forced main, and that led to a conversation about building a six-inch main, public main, down Route 15, for roughly the same amount of money between construction and, and privilege fees and entry fees, and so forth. So, the proposal on the table, and Mr. Moreau is in full support of this proposal, is that he would build a six-inch main to his property, and it would be a public main that the town would own and maintain after it's built. We would oversee design, we would oversee construction, we would accept it when it's complete, and it would be one mile of new sewer extension down Route 15. The question before the board, in, in reality, is how do you, how are we classifying this property for sewage privileges fees? And in the packet, I put together a spreadsheet, if this was classified as strictly residential, between the privileges and, and entry fees, it would equal over $2.8 million in fees that he would owe the town to connect. Given that it's, and then in the sewer bylaws, there's a series of different classifications. So, in a commercial property that has, that's using sewer, and we don't have a good water estimate, because a, a commercial property with town water would pay based upon water consumption, but we don't have a good water number, so I use the 31,000 gallon a day capacity of a sewage treatment plant, that's the design capacity, to come up with the privilege and entry fee, if we were to treat this part, project as a commercial property, he would owe a privilege and entry fee right between 1.2 and 1.3 million dollars, in addition to his cost to connect at Farquhar Road. So, there's a series of issues before us tonight, but the proposal on the table is to work with Mr. Moreau to build a six-inch public main down Route 15 at his cost. We would, if that's acceptable to the board, we would have KP Law draw up an agreement between the town and Mr. Moreau to outline responsibilities, liabilities, indemnifications, and who, and approvals throughout this entire process. Mr. Moreau's here this evening, if you want to answer any questions, but I'll be happy to answer questions, it's a very complex issue. There's no, there's, there's nothing in the bylaws that says an RV park gets assessed X. And even if we were to consider it residential, would you consider it a multifamily project which has half this privilege fee of a regular residential unit? So, there's a series of, not ambiguities, but determinations for the board to make in this process.
Okay, questions from the board? Priscilla?
Am I reading this correctly, when I say, when I read this, and it says that you're saying in lieu of payment of additional fee, privilege, and entrance fees, is that right?
Yes, because if you were to classify this as the non-residential developed without town water, because we don't know his water number.
Mm-hmm.
His entry fee would be about 1.2 million.
Right, I thought that's what you're saying.
He's projecting to pay more than double that to get the line to his property.
Right, I thought that's what you were saying, I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
That's all. Okay. I haven't changed my opinion since last time we talked about this. And I spoke to Butch Jackson today to ask about a six-inch line, the adequacy, and he said it would be adequate. I also asked him about the smell, because someone said something about odor, I heard it through the grapevine, and he said that that is not an issue, and would not be an issue, and with all that they have today, if they can mitigate anything like that. And then he told me about a couple of spots in town where they had a problem, and it's all, it's been resolved. We talked about in the past of a senior center possibly going on that property. I know it's out there, it's maybe a couple of three, four years out the road, but the sewer line would already be there, and it certainly is an opportunity. I would like to, I, first of all, Mr. Moreau, thank you for your generosity, for your offer, for even wanting to do this, because I think that the money we would put into this, 'cause we've held back on this project for years, 'cause we never could afford to do the project, that that money can go to fields. We've been talking about fields for years and years and years, and it's always been a question of cost. I agree with the no-connection fee, as the town administrator has said. I think this is a one-time deal, and I think it's a good deal for the town, because I think once that sewer line goes down, I think you're gonna see the growth in another way. I think you're gonna see people wanting to come in, some small businesses, obviously. We're not talking box stores on that strip, because it's not big enough. And I think that we'll get it back in user, in user fees and everything. I personally think, I wanna, I wanna say to you, thank you again. I don't know what the outcome is gonna be, but I, for one, appreciate something that no one has ever done, and thank you for even thinking about it. Comments? Chase?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Moreau, too. He's done a lot for the town's disturbance, and it is appreciated. To me, I feel like you got Route 15 and you have Farquhar Road. I do strongly feel that there should be some tying connection fee. Now, what that fee is, I'm not, I don't have it in my mind right now. If he does run a line all the way down Route 15, I feel a break should be given. But you look at the properties on Route 15 right now that could use this line, I don't know if 1.2 million dollars is a wash for the town. I don't know if it's a 1.2 million beneficiary for the town. So, I, I'm in for a tie-in.
Mike?
Massachusetts law requires that sewer fees are fair and equitable. And, you know, I really appreciate Mr. Moreau's efforts and so forth, but I, I do have to say that recently, within the last two years, the town has, you know, on, on another project has said that we would not waive any fees and would not contribute to the construction of sewer extension. So, you know, being fair and equitable is difficult in this case. As much as I'd like to say, yeah, let's, let's give the RV park a, you know, a reasonable, reasonable break, the board has been steadfast recently on not doing so on another project. And I, you know, I've got a problem about being fair and equitable, about our sewer fees and, and charges, and, and I guess there's, yeah. I don't know where to go with this, because I would like, love to see this project go, but I'm thinking about fairness and equity.
Mary?
Well, I'll also begin by saying I had an opportunity to take a tour of the proposed RV park with our town administrator, and for those watching, it is truly going to be a real asset disturbance. It's beautiful. He's had a lot of experience around the country building similar RV sites, and I hate to even call it an RV site, I mean, it's, I would like to go there for the week myself. Yeah, it's very, it's very nice, and he has properties in the south, and in Arizona, or in Vegas, so certainly a quality project. I'll begin by backing up a little bit and saying, I would like to see one of the alternatives to tie in become a reality for a few reasons, as opposed to an onsite, which he, which I believe he already has a DEP permit for that, and it perks, and it, it could be a go that way as well. But one thing is, when we built a bigger sewer plant, sewer, well, at least what a treatment plant, at town meeting, we, we got voters saying, you know, we're going to add neighborhoods on to bring down the cost in the longer run to the current rate payers. And we really haven't brought on very many to date, and it's, it's a very expensive town water and sewer bill for a lot of people. I'm on Town Services, but I have a lot of people saying, you know, and to the point where other neighborhoods really don't want to tie in, because it's a big expense. So if he can tie into Farquhar Road, or extend the sewer down 15, that's not simply a benefit to bring in a business or two. 'Cause I, kind of on Chase's, I don't know how many businesses that's actually going to benefit at that end, but it certainly will benefit the current sewer users. And I know in the past, when we set the rate, we've tried to soften it with Barbara by, you know, making it a little bit, little bit less, and she had told us, well, we're not gonna meet our obligation. So I would like to see one of those two things happen. What I told Jeff is, for me, it's, it's the oversight if we extend down 15. My preference would have been if the town's going to assume maintenance and repair, and it's going to be the town's, I would have preferred the town building it, because it's gonna be our responsibility and overseeing, more than just overseeing construction. And I was told that by, in terms of the timelines, it, it wouldn't suit the applicant. Because what we have to keep in mind is, then it's gonna be the town, so if there's any breaks or anything, it's on the town. So my thing would be, if the town's not gonna build it, I would like to approve the contractor, I would like to have the kind of oversight if things go wrong in the construction, which, you know, a lot of times, I kinda wanna airtight that the town's not held, you know, responsible. 'Cause I'm a little bit uncomfortable with having a private part, and I know, you know, Jeff explained that there is a lot of private-public partnerships these days to get infrastructure accomplished, I can appreciate that. But I guess I'm a little uneasy with a pri, a private applicant building it, and then it becomes the town's, and it's our responsibility for the future and the repair and everything. So I wanna make sure that it's done consistent with how we would want it done, that's my thing. I, as, in terms of the connection fee, I'm a little bit, go over that again in terms of, we don't have anything in our sewer laws right now, in our sewer bylaws that says, this is how an RV park is treated. I get it.
Right.
Okay. So, what would, are we waiving the connection? Explain Farquhar Road again versus extending the line in terms of what kind of benefit we would give the RV park? Because we need to be consistent. We can't give preferential treatment to one and call that fair and equitable. So I honestly, I just need you to go over that again for me.
Okay. So if he were to connect directly to Farquhar Road, and I believe that the, the commercial classification of this project is probably appropriate, it's its own commercial, it's tax commercial, so that's probably appropriate. And in that event, based upon his sewer usage, the 31,000 gallons a day, and this spreadsheet needs to be updated, it says 30,000, it should be 31,000. So there's a few more dollars in there. He would pay for the direct cost to Farquhar Road on a, on a private forced main, it would be his alone. And in addition to the cost of constructing that, he would be liable for the privilege and entry fee of roughly 1.2 million dollars, in addition to the construction of that.
And how do we, how do we come up with 1.3?
It's based upon the units and his 31,000 gallon a day plant.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
We should, according to the bylaw, we should use a town water assumption number, but we don't have that. There's not good numbers for the use of town water, so I went with the capacity of the plant. Now, according to Mr. Moreau, his actual sewer volume is somewhere around 17,000 to 20,000 gallons a day. Tie and bond, agree with that, but his design capacity of the plant's 31, and that's what I used for this, this exercise. So if he were to build a private forced main to Farquhar Road, he would, that would be entirely his cost.
Do we know what that is, roughly?
It's somewhere around a million dollars, I think. Not much, not that, a little less, okay. And then he would be responsible for the privilege and entry fee, and that's actually specified in our bylaws.
I, right. When you went like this, from a million, does that mean, I know that, but is it like 507, I'm just curious.
My best guess would be, is a $400,000 range to construct a forced main. I mean, if you figure it's only four tenths of a mile, it's not that far.
Okay, thank you.
You all set?
Well, no, no, no.
So then if, if...
I just wanna, I just want both scenarios.
Right, so he is offering to build the public main for 2.4 million dollars, which is more than double the entry fee and the privilege fee. So the, the thought process is, he has more than paid the fee by the donation of public infrastructure. And that's, in a sense, what's gonna, what's happening here. He's building and donating to us infrastructure designed for the public, designed to our specification, and handed to the public at the end of construction.
Can I, can I ask a question? I don't wanna put you on the spot, but what would...
Let me...
Okay, nice, thank you.
No, oh, Jesus Christ, no.
I feel like I'm selling encyclopedias.
They don't use them anymore.
Let me just ask this before you give it like a little... No. What would be the benefit to the, to you? I, I understand that you're, you're trying to give infrastructure to 15, but what would be the benefit to you of the second alternative, extending Route 15 versus tying into Farquhar Road? Is there also a benefit to your business taking that route? 'Cause I mean, I know it's an extra 1.2, so there's, I know you're being altruistic, but there's gotta be a, a business reason that you would prefer the, the second.
My primary belief is that that would, the run down Route 15 is a very straightforward run. You've got the town right away around, along the roadside. I believe the town does own the road. And that would make my life a lot easier. In other jurisdictions, we've had situations where we've had to get easements from our neighbors to run an underground bored sewer line, and you could have a 99% vote of people saying, yes, that would be a great idea, and one negative vote, and you're out of slits. You're, you, you wouldn't be able to do it, 'cause that property would be integral to the line, and the property owner would say, no, I don't, I'm gonna give you an easement to run your sewer line. So while I haven't looked at the exact line and whether I would need such easements, it's possible that I would. So that was my initial thinking as to why to support the town.
Okay. How many easements do, do you even know roughly what you, the amount of property owners that you would have to go through?
We could probably, in thinking it through, just take the line down the road, and I would imagine that might be straightforward with zero easements. But originally, I was thinking of boring, which is really a lot easier and quicker and cleaner, and if we were to bore, then it would be advantageous to go underneath someone's property if that property made for a more direct route. And so I haven't quite done the math on whether that's two or three easements, or whether they're even necessary. But that's what I had run into before, where, okay, the most direct route, we can go under this person's property with a boring line, zero disturbance to that property, but there's, you know, you would need an easement to do that. So, in trying to weigh through all those alternatives, I then thought, well, a six-inch line going down Route 15 would benefit the town. And in consideration for that, it's a question of, do I really wanna pay for just a fee to tie in, or would I be better off doing something that could eventually benefit the town in the future, with of course, this very board having the, the power to control what would go on that future? So tonight, it's really just, give me the line, and the future is in your hands to decide what, if anything, you would want to allow to tie into it. So I started thinking, you know, it really would be a, and, and what's driving it overall is that I really, even though I'm even though I'm in the sewer business already, in Mass, in Pennsylvania, where we have a 332 space park sitting on about the same acreage as this current park, with almost the exact same sites, and even though that, that treatment facility that we built there is operating like a dream, I mean, the words sewer never comes into my, my realm, it just operates really well. And so, but nevertheless, I'm still dealing with the DEP in Pennsylvania on a regular basis, and I just don't like being in that business necessarily. It's a, it's a, and it's not that expensive, in all honesty. My estimates here for running a, a plant similar to what we have in Pennsylvania, I've heard estimates of a low of 100,000 and a high of 150,000, to have the licensed operator and the professional engineer oversight of what we're trying to do. That's a pretty hefty annual fee. And if I could get away from that with a one-time fee and have a one-pay line go in, that would benefit the town if you so choose. I can say this, the $200,000 a year I'll be paying in occupancy tax is a good start towards a ball field or something. I can say that rather than the, in adding additional flow, I would say that our average flow over the course of the year, in that we're closed four months, would be well below 30,000 gallons. That's peak flow at a peak time, and in our park here, our peak flows are about 17,000 to 20,000 gallons per day on 4th of July, Memorial Day, and Labor Day. And for the rest of the time over the year, we probably have average flows of 10,000 or 12,000. Nonetheless, and I, I haven't done my homework, how much do I have to pay to, for that flow to go into your system? And does that benefit the system here? And is the plant here, that I believe was recently expanded to 1.1 million gallons per day?
1.3.
1.3, excuse me. You know, could it, would it function better if it had that flow? And would that fee that I pay on an end, on a monthly basis for years and years and years and years be an annuity to the town that would be a real benefit, regardless of who ties in or who doesn't? And again, that's your decision. My decision is simply, this would be a, overall, a positive step, I think, for giving back to the community, putting the community in a position to, you know, make a decision as to... putting the community in a position to, you know, make a decision as to the growth or no growth. And for me, economically, given that I'm out from under the annual fees of paying my own guy to run my own plant in exchange for paying whatever my usage is to the city to benefit their plant, I said, all in all, I, I like this idea. It's, I think if you really were to crunch the numbers, it's very close. It's really very close. There's a lot of subtle factors involved in running the plant, my own labor towards running the plant versus not being involved. You know, I'd probably have to have two or three key employees that really understood how to manipulate the plant to get it to really hum right if I had my own facility. And so you add it all up and crunch all the numbers through, and it's, to me, kind of a push. And so I say, well, if it's a push, what's the best way to give back to the community? And I think, I'll just divert just for a minute. What we've done there, and Mary has seen it, and Jeff's seen it, Chase has seen it. What we have done there is take a property that had sites like this. And sites. That's your homemade pier right on the, the lake. And we've taken that property, and we are gonna totally transform a property that will turn into generating $200,000 a year in occupancy tax. Employment for summer use, looking for neat places to be, and adding the essence of family values and family fun to an area that was at cottages with interiors that look kinda like that. So we have really rehabilitated it and tried to make it as nice as it possibly can be. And it will be nice. It will have a beautiful pool exactly like this. This is the pool we built at our park outside Las Vegas. We will have landscaping similar to the landscaping at our interest, uh, entrance in Virginia Beach, which is what that is. We will have actually even a better putt-putt golf course, pickleball court, fitness center, billiard room. Extra, uh, the fitness center will be great. And we'll have a quadruple gathering area with two fire pits similar to our park outside of Palm Springs. So we're really trying to elevate that area that was troubled. And we're on track. And so the decision tonight isn't really about what the future is gonna be or what this might lead to. It's really just, I'm here to say, I'd really like to give back to the town. I'd like to get out of the sewer business. And I think people can probably agree with that one. And, uh, you know, economically, does it make sense for me? You bet. Does it make the operation of that park better and safer and all-around, uh, beneficial? Yes, because it's one last thing I won't have to worry about. And so that's really why I'm here tonight, just to try to, can we just, you know, really stay focused? And, and fair and equitable is certainly a valid concern. But were those other, uh, businesses or other, uh, establishments, did they, have they, did they go into an area and really turn it around as radically as I'm gonna turn this property around? Are they paying $200,000 a year just in the occupancy tax? And are they willing to put a couple million bucks up to get a line to go down a corridor that when I first came here, when I first came here was with my sister way back when, and we visited Sturbridge like tourists. And I, I was struck by the town, so here I am today. But when I came here two years ago, I talked to the town about running a line to the nearest manhole right across the street here. And unfortunately, uh, the Director of Public Works said that it just wouldn't be possible. And so I dropped it, and that's when we got our DEP permit and decided to build our own facility, which I've done. I, I have, I have that very facility. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking it through, and I'm saying, gosh, here's an opportunity to really create a win-win situation. And I really think it will benefit the town from both my fees that I pay on a monthly basis, the use of, uh, better utilization of your expanded facility, and just the, uh, stability that a system like that will lend to the operations of the park.
You all set on your?
No, thank you for all that. I just, the only thing I wanted.
That was a long answer.
No, no, it was helpful.
I apologize.
To get the question.
I really, I apologize. I'm just passionate. I'm, I'm, I'm passionate about what I'm doing, and we're getting so close. We're, we're making progress. You know, and it's, it's the availability of parks to build my own plant that has, that takes so long to bring in from Germany that opened up this window to reexamine this issue. Because I realized all of a sudden, I, the, the sewer guy that's gonna, the guy that's gonna build my plant for me, he said, the earliest we can get this going is March and April. And let's get our cement in the ground now, and then we'll have it all ready. And then when the parks arrive, we'll be able to piece it together and get you running by March or April. And so I had originally projected opening in October, which would have been a stretch. So it opened up this window of, a breather, if you will. Let's take a fresh look at this issue. And that's where Shane Moody from the Water Company came in and talked with me and said, this is such a win-win, I think you should take a look at it.
I do.
That's when I met with Mr. Bridges, and he was, uh, a breath of fresh air. Unlike the reception that I had two years ago, when it was like, no, I, I really don't think, we can do anything with this concept of you running your own forced main line. Because I just entertained that for our park in Arizona, so.
No, as I said, thank you for all that. I, I did want to know how it was beneficial to you in particular. And you were honest, you don't want to be in the sewer business, that's why you don't want to self-contained. And in terms of which tie-in is preferable, it's less problematic because there's no easements, it's a straight line. So that, that is what I was looking for. In terms of being, you know, I, I've already said my preference, I would like to see it either work with Farquhar or with Route 15. But I just want to make clear, you know, fair and equitable, it, it doesn't turn for me on, you know, the amount of your occupancy or, or that type of thing, because then it would be tantamount to us saying, well, when we're making decisions about who can tie in, we're gonna favor a bigger operation who's gonna bring the town more money than, say, a smaller business. And to me, that's kind of the antithesis of fair and equitable. So I just wanted to sit, put that on the table. I, I know what you were trying to say, it, it would benefit the town, but it certainly can't turn on, on the size of the project because smaller businesses can't be treated differently because they're a smaller business. So I just, I just want to put that out there. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know what to do with Chase's concern about the 1.3. What?
No, good.
How many, um, I know we don't know exactly, but we say it's up to us. It really isn't, it, it's only for what it's zoned for. And they'll get to tie in. Yeah, that's, that's really not up to us. The money is not up to us, whether the increased amount goes to a field or whatever, that, it goes into our general fund. And it would get voted on at town meeting. So I don't, it, it really isn't in the Board of Selectmen's hands. So I just want to ask, we've got, um, how, how many, how much benefit does it give to Route 15? Because right now, the Shepherd parcel, we may want to try to do something with it, but right now, it's got a conservation restriction, and that's the way it sits right now. Uh, and then we have the Army Corps of Engineers land. How many other private owners in that one mile or, it's longer than a mile?
Well, I think, the way I've looked at this, and it, and I think it's different than what a couple of you are looking at it. I'm looking at this as the first leg of a line to get to Pilot.
Yep, right.
To get to that interchange at Pilot.
A little bit closer.
Right? So there only may be a couple properties from where it is now at Main Street to River Road, but you have others further down the line. And the reality of this situation is if you don't, if, if you take Mr. Moreau out of the mix of a future sewer customer that will participate in a line down Route 15, you have now degraded your possibility of ever getting that line down Route 15 because you've taken one of your bigger users out of the mix. If you say, go, go to Farquhar Road direct, there's no reason for him to participate through Betterment or otherwise in a future line down Route 15. So and what, the way I look at this is, there may only be a couple of users between here and there right now, but it's the first leg of a, of a process to get it to further down the road.
I would like to know, that was one of my questions, how many parcels there are though in that area? And then further on, I know you're probably more futuristic than I am, but first of all, Mr. Moreau, I'd like to echo the thought of everyone here, you know, thank you for coming to Sturbridge, and it is gonna be beautiful, no doubt about it, and you've put a lot into it. Okay, but even further on down the road now, Paz Plaza, they've already put, Plaza. They've already put this in. There aren't that many parcels on the other side. There's, um, the Kelly Road, the, um.
Kelly Road is past that.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I mean, you know, he, Jeff's futuristic, saying if we get this in, then we can do this and that. Where Sbarro's was, they're putting it, putting in their own new thing. We have the Bennett Road place and everything. So I would like to see the parcels, you know, what could be? Because on the right-hand side, it's highway, so we know not much. Nobody's gone there. But I do have a problem, and I am not in agreement with waiving any fees. We don't waive them for other people. It isn't fair, and like Mike said, there is another project that asked to have their fees waived, and we said no. And I do agree with Mary on, you can't say one project's better than another project. They're all good projects in bringing things into town. I would like to see more numbers on projections as far as what the fees might be on the sewerage. You can estimate based on our rates now and on the, um, projected flows also.
Your monthly, monthly costs?
Yeah, the, yeah, for. Because Barbara has all that, um, information. But I am really not, um, in favor of waiving any fees whatsoever. Priscilla?
I'm hearing about other projects, but maybe I forgot something. Can, these other projects, did they give anything, like Mr. Moreau's giving, the sewer line? Did they give us anything like that, that we said, no, we're not waiving your fees? Because I forgot if they did. I don't recall anybody else doing this.
No, not, because every, every project is different, and somebody can't say, I'll give you this if you give me that, because not everybody has the money to give for a sewer line and everything. But you do have to look at the projects. Yes, the other project would, um, bring in fees to the town. Quite a bit, quite a few fees, money rather. But, um, you know, that's even like people, you know, single family homes, people gonna say, can you waive my fee? You know, you waived this for this person, and this person had money, so you waived it. You know, you get, you get all that, so I'm just.
What kind of fee?
Let me be clear.
What is the amount of the fee?
I'm not, the, the way I'm looking at this is he's, if he were to connect, he'd pay 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. He's willing to double that.
Yeah, exactly.
So in terms of infrastructure value. So I don't see, I would see us waiving a fee in addition to a $2.4 million contribution to our public infrastructure. So that's kind of what I'm, I'm talking about. I'm not talking about waiving his fees and getting no return on, on the value. Talking about waiving additional fees beyond a $2.4 million construction of public infrastructure. That's, that's my point.
And what kind of fee are we, what kind of fee are we?
1.2 million dollars.
We're talking about 1.2. I, so it's like 2.4 versus 3.6, right? I, I, I'm not saying you're offering this, don't, don't get worried. But what, in, in other words.
Well, if you were, if you were to say, yes, go ahead and build this.
I know, he's doubling it, so you're saying that's the quid pro quo for the fee?
Yes.
Basically, I get that.
Very much so.
And I, I understand these two are saying, but it, we still waiving a fee, if you will. So we're debating 2.4, or would, would you both be on board with having him build the line if there was some fee attached? I guess that's my question to the other four members.
Well, I don't wanna, yeah, but some fee, but we need some dollar figures on that. If we're saying some fee, what would that be? I am really reluctant to start a precedent of waiving fees for the sewer. And the same with water, although you've got your own site. Chase?
Yeah, we keep talking this 2.4, 2.4. 400,000 of that is just in case something goes wrong. This could be a lot less than 2.4. So we don't, I mean, we, we're going off a kind of an inflated number.
Well, it's based, it's Ty and Bond's number, Ty and Bond's number based upon recent sewer line construction costs.
But it could be a lot less than 2.4.
So if it was less than.
So I'm unsure I, I get your point. So if it's two, so if it's 2 million?
Yeah.
It's not as much of a benefit, is that what you're?
So it's not a benefit?
Well, we keep saying he's gonna run a $2.4 million line. We, we are potentially not running a $2.4 million line.
So we run a $2 million line? I'm not sure I get the point here. It's still, it's still free.
I guess we value the properties differently. You value that as a 1.2, you'd waive the 1.2 million dollar fee for 15. I don't see the properties from the town hall to where he's going as 1.2 million dollars. With it, there's essentially three. Shepherd parcel, we don't know if we can build. The residential house, this line, and E1 pump is not gonna tie into this line. This is a much different line than what we're talking about. You're gonna have a small pump station to tie into this line. That residential house is not gonna want to build a pump station to tie into this line. So essentially, we're talking about one property that this line would benefit.
Which one?
The day, the old days in.
Okay, okay, that, that's what I was after when I asked Jeff.
Do we value running sewer by the old days in, more than 1.2 million dollar check to the town? That's a personal, that's a personal thing.
I think, yeah, some, a lot of this can be personal, but I totally think that, um, is it a precedent? Yes, it is a precedent. Are you setting a precedent? You bet, you are, in, in my opinion. And since I've sat here, nobody's given anything like this, okay? They've given land, yes, they've given a few different things, but not to this value. And all I've heard for the time I've been on this board, from within the community, not just this board, but in different, we've had studies on 15, and a study, and another study, and another study till it's ad nauseam on 15. And here's an opportunity. And what I'm hearing now is, well, you know what, there's not that much. I'm not sure, I'm conflicted. I can't imagine anybody out there not being conflicted. Because we hear, we have these meetings, we go to the public house, they have a meeting presentation from CMRPC, we have other studies, and yet, um, here's an opportunity, and instead of, I, I feel, instead of looking at the opportunity for what it can bring for us as a community, aside of what it's going to do for Mr. Moreau's entity, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm totally lost in the shuffle. As far as the wastewater treatment plant, I agree with you, because I know, I know the mobile park on Kelly Road. And, um, at one time, they were approached to tie in. mobile park on Kelly Road, and at one time, they were approached to tie in if, if ever we had a sewer line. But they couldn't wait because they had a DEP order, and they had to either do it or be shut down at that point. So, they had to build their own wastewater treatment plant, but it's not cheap. It's not cheap to build it, and it's not cheap to maintain it, and they have to have full-time employee. I get exactly what you're saying because with their 200 homes, it's a costly adventure. So, this is a win for, in my opinion, for everybody. And I just hope, I just hope it happens, but I don't know.
The same issue, was this property also was under an order?
Yes.
To build its own plant?
Yes.
Or somehow get to, that was an order issued in 2009?
Yeah.
By the DEP?
Yep.
And guess what happened? Nothing.
Nothing, yep.
Man. And when I came here two years ago, I attended a rest, a breakfast about, hey, what would be best for this Route 15 corridor? And the consensus was clear, outdoor recreation. How are you going to attract outdoor recreation, which would be a great use for that corridor? Here I am with the outdoor recreation personified, an RV park. Can't get any more outdoor recreation than that. And what other collateral businesses are you going to attract? Well, they're all going to want sewer. So, if the study done by that firm, and I forget the PR firm that did that, and if it really is an interest in the town's belief to make that a recreation corridor, then here's a good leg up. I think that's how Jeff sees it. I myself just am trying to bring it down to just tonight's decision on this property because we'll have the opportunity to visit any future growth or future development or future fees at that time. But tonight, you say, gee, is this a fair quid pro quo for what I'm, what we're discussing to build the line versus the benefit to the town? And only you guys can make that decision, I can't, so.
Yeah, I'm still hung up on waiving any fees. Anyone else in town on sewer paid for it. The only ones, the Betterments were reduced when Hobbs Brook went in because they put it in, but the people along the way put it in. The fees are set by our bylaws, and I'm not even sure the Board of Selectmen has the right to waive fees if they're in the bylaw. We're supposed to adhere to the bylaws, so we probably would need to...
We can find out.
Check on that. Is the board, does the board need more information? Would we like to table this to our next meeting? Or does the board...
I don't, I would think he's got a time factor. I mean, you're going to hit the bad weather pretty soon, you know?
If we voted tonight, I don't think it would fly.
I don't think it would fly anyway.
Let me ask you a question.
Priscilla, also, if we need more information, we need more information. We can't be, you know, pushed just because somebody's in a hurry.
I didn't say he was. I, I didn't, I don't want to put that in his mouth. I said it. I asked if he was in a hurry. I'm not saying he said it. So, I just want that clear in the record, that Mr. Moreau didn't say it. It was my thought, that's all.
Mary?
Can I ask a question?
Am I correct that we really wouldn't know what the privilege fee would be to extend the, it's 1.3 to go Farquaad Road, and I can appreciate what he's saying, he's going to have to possibly go to landowners, and I'm not sure how I...
Or so, it's really, under, under that to build my own plan.
Right, I, I'm following you. But I'm still back to, we don't really, we can't really assess this because we don't have, we don't address RVs in our bylaws, right?
Well, you're assessing it as a commercial user of wastewater services.
But I know, but I guess...
It's no different than a bank.
No, I have no problem with the commercial designation of it, but I have a real problem with waiving any fees.
What if the town were to extend the sewer for whatever cost it is to us, and then we assess? No, no, I'm saying, well, you have a little disbelief on you.
Yeah, but Mary, again...
Hold on, hold on. If he can do it for 2.4, you're going to hear me out, my preference all along was if we're responsible for the repair and maintenance, then we should be the one that builds it and charges the privilege fee, which is, would be a quid pro quo anyway. He wouldn't be, give, being a gift for anything. His privilege fee would, would be the cost of us building it.
No, it'd be half.
And that is the privilege fee. Well, it would be half, but then, then it wouldn't be looked at as we're gifting him, you know, the right to, we're gifting him the amount of the privilege fee. He would have a privilege fee, just like everybody else, it would be consistent with how we put in town sewer everywhere, and we'd assess him, and it would be the value of what it cost us to put it in, and then we wouldn't have Chase's question of questioning whether it is worth 2.4. I know what you're saying. So, let's just say he built it for 800,000.
That's all.
Now, you're comparing the 1.3 for Farquaad Road with a value of 800,000 benefiting the days in only. I, I follow his reasoning. But if time wasn't of the essence, if the town has to maintain it and repair it and has oversight and it becomes town, the town should build it and assess him the privilege fee for it.
Well, there's only a certain number of contractors that can do this work in town. So, there's nothing to say that his contractor wouldn't be the same contractor that would bid it on our project either.
Yeah, but we would be, yes, but we would be building it, so...
Yeah, but the town doesn't build sewers.
We'd be, well, the town, the contract out, we'd contract out just like we did for Fisk Hill and every other...
The oversight and inspection and the design would all be town, it'd be town specifications, town design.
Town approval of the contractor.
Yes, all that. Because they have to be, have to be capable of doing the job.
Can't just have any.
The contractor has to be licensed with the town.
Those who are against waiving the fee, I have a question. If we said, okay, this is the fee, would you be willing to give a TIF to offset that cost?
Um, well, I, I don't know if it would fall under the category of qualifying for a TIF.
I, I don't know, but it puts the clock way down the road.
Yeah.
So, my question is, if there's not a consensus gelling around the 2.4 million dollar project, is there an acceptance for his consideration of allowing the direct connect to Farquaad Road and being responsible for whatever privilege fee there is?
All fees.
Whatever, whatever the calculation tends to be, yes. Because that is called, spelled out specifically in the bylaw.
Well, I'll jump in. How can we say no? Yeah, I mean, first of all, yeah, I already made my preference that I'd like to see him tie in somehow. I, I, I'm not, I still would like to pursue further the, the extension myself. I'd like a little more guidance from council, like, how many projects of this nature have they drafted contracts for? One, what is their answer to a challenge that it's not fair and equitable under our bylaws? I mean, that, that type of thing. I mean, you had said, we don't have, this is like a case of first impression. So, it, it's different than other scenarios, I assume. But, you know, how would we deal with that kind of a challenge from a future applicant?
If another RV park wants to come in and offer the same thing, I'm sure we would consider it.
I don't think we have a problem.
This is, these are, in the future, you're going to see more and more of this because this is how infrastructure's getting built. Towns can't afford it anymore. So, you look for opportunities and you look for synergies. And that's really what's going to take place now.
Yeah, but town doesn't, we, we don't pay... Town's never been in the business of putting sewers, and it's always been the developer that pays and anything.
Yeah, he's the developer.
Yes, totally, but fees included.
I understand what you're saying there, I get it.
Chase, how do you feel about, the Farquaad Road and all fees paid?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Mike?
What, well, I mean, I don't know how, how well that fits into our original master plan for sewer that, that Tyon Bond had prepared and we paid them...
Yeah, that was $500,000.
For sewer-ing this area, you know? It's like, that doesn't fit in with our master plan. I'm just really, really, I wish that we had come together some time ago because this whole project could have been done easily by assessing a Betterment assessment to, to all of the abiders and the users and...
The way it's normally been done.
And that way, your project would have, you know, time to pay at a very low interest rate over, I guess, whatever...
Then why can't we do that now? That's what I'm asking.
I, I don't know why we can't do that now.
But you have a public hearing.
I don't know what, well, number one, we would have to go to town meeting to get an appropriation.
To do what? Oh, for us to put the sewer?
If we were going to put the sewer, and we don't have an appropriation, so that will take some time.
That wouldn't fly, that's...
That's another issue.
Well, it might fly, I would bet, if the entire cost of the project was covered by a Betterment assessment.
Well, no, because there will be people that won't want it because they don't want to pay Betterment. They don't want, another group won't want development and everything.
And the Army Corps is not going to pay a Betterment.
No.
Well, so, I, I don't know about that, I, but, I, I just, I think one, you know, you know, he's willing, it, it's really difficult because if we, if we could just get it built, there's, you know, if the town could do it, and I agree with Mary, it would be, it would be good because we could spread out the Betterment.
But we would have done it 10 years ago if the town could afford it. We, we had that study from 2010, and every time it comes up, we can't afford it, we can't afford it, we can't afford it. And, and now...
We can't. And we can't. So, anyways, is there any more information that people need that'll...
For me, no.
Make a decision.
For me, no.
Chase?
I would like to know if we do have the power to waive the fee or negotiate the fee.
Well, because it's the bylaw.
And I don't really see us as, I guess we keep using that term waive the fee. There is no fee associated with 15 right now because it's not addressed in our bylaws. We wouldn't even know what the fee would be.
No, these are tie-in fees.
Tie-in fees. But what would the tie-in?
The privilege fee?
It'd be 1.3 million dollars.
Just like Farquaad Road?
That's what we're talking about, really. We're talking about the difference between him building a private extension to Farquaad Road and paying a privilege fee or donating 2.4 million dollars, estimated.
See, to me, it's really not, here's where I'm coming from. I don't see us like, I don't see it as a donation on his part, number one. But I also don't see it as us as waiving anything. It's basically the equivalent of a privilege fee on Route 15. I mean, we're, we're, we're getting more, even if it's not 2.4, we're getting a million dollars.
Of Betterment.
Of Betterment. So, so my view is, we're really not waiving anything, and at the same time, with all due respect, I don't really view that as, as a donation on his part either because he's not paying the 1.3 of the other one. I mean, it, both are benefiting, but we're not waiving anything, nor is he donating anything. It's basically the equivalent of what a privilege fee would have been. He's give it, going to give an extra million dollars. So, we're not giving him a gift the way we're kind of, it's not a gift if he's giving an extra million dollars. I don't know, I just...
Uh-huh.
I would like to know how many other times Tyon Bond has seen this done and...
I don't know how many other times Tyon Bond's done it, but I've done it over 100 times.
Yeah, I don't...
I mean, we built infrastructure all over in my former jobs, and this is how it was done. Developer money, public infrastructure, they design it, we inspect it, we accept it, we move on.
Yeah, because these are our bylaws.
I understand.
And, you know, when we did, and I also inquired about whether this would be something that would need to go to town meeting.
They do not believe so.
Okay, can they put that in writing?
He's working on it.
Okay.
To answer you with Fisk Hill before, you know, when, when those were put in, they were paid by Betterment.
Right.
Yeah, and the sewer privilege fee used to be based on that, but then they came up with the 7,500, you know, it was based on, I forget which phase. But anyways, I personally don't need any more information to make my decision. If, if the proposal is to go up Farquaad Road waiving no fees or anything, I will be totally on board. But if there's going to be a proposal to waive any fees, I will vote against it.
I want to clarify something. I said over 100 times, I've done it a lot, I don't know the quantity.
Well...
I don't want to be held... Where's 100?
Pinocchio.
Yeah, I've done it a lot.
I would like to know if our council has done it, because I'm more interested in the contract.
I understand.
And the oversight, and if something goes wrong, you know, who's, who's stuck in that situation? I don't, we have a very good relationship right now, I wouldn't want to see it go south. And let's face it, construction contracts, there, there's a lot of lawsuits that are involved in that kind of thing. And I just don't want to see the town in a position where it costs us any money. And I want to make sure Cobbleman and Page has done this before, and we're not, you know, their test case on it.
Okay.
Because I can tell you, if I vote in favor of this and something does go south, there's going to be a lot of residents very upset if we're, if we're stuck with anything.
So, do you want to wait then to make it?
I would, I would like to, I'm on the fence.
Mike, do you want to go ahead this evening?
Well, I do...
I'm, I'm not on the fence at all with Farquaad Road, but I...
Okay, so Farquaad Road is an acceptable alternative?
Absolutely. But I'm still, but I'm still, I'm still willing to, to think about 15.
Well, we can still get those questions for future reference. Because I still have the question about, you know, can we waive anything if it's a bylaw? You know, because bylaws are voted on by town meeting.
Right.
So, Mike, how do you, do you want to wait or do you want to go ahead?
I don't even know what, what the master plan for this area was. So, without that information, I can't vote. Because I, my, my position would be that the sewer should be constructed in accordance with the town's overall plan for sewer, sewer-ing this part of town. And we've paid good money to have that done. I don't have that in front of me, you know, I don't, it's been a long time since I've seen it, so I don't have that information. So, even going up Farquaad Road, if that's contrary to the master plan for sewer-ing this area, I would be against it because I, I really believe that we should plan. And I, you know, I worked in a town that had 17 sewage pumping stations because they didn't plan. They could have designed, built that whole town with one wastewater pumping station. And they had 17, and that's a maintenance nightmare. So, just saying.
Chase, how do you feel?
I would like to wait just to answer the question about the bylaw fee, because I mean, ultimately, where I'm at, I'll say publicly, running it down Route 15 would be great. It would be great for the town, I feel it would be great for you. I just personally feel that some tie-in fee should be associated with that. Now, the 1.2 million is, that's the max tie-in. I would like to see a break go to him for running that line, but I do feel that some tie-in fee should be associated with that one.
I think the fair tie-in fee should be associated instead of dealing, you know...
Fair. So, that would be 1.3 on 15 as well? I just want to make sure I understand where we're coming from.
That's my, yeah, that's what it would be.
1.3 on Farquaad and 1.3 for 15 notwithstanding his offer for 2.4.
If we were to assess a tie-in fee and a privilege fee, it would be 1.
That's what I was asking.
My, my recommendation would be 1.3. Somewhere around there, depending upon the final...
Okay, so it's painting over a million dollars, basically.
Can I, can I ask you, was that 31,000 gallons per day based on Title V calculation?
Whatever his DEP permit was.
DEP, well, it would have been if it was.
It was based on experience at similar parks, and it was set by the Mass DEP.
Mass DEP, which would, which would have followed Title V, which is in our regulations.
Right.
Okay.
Which, which 31,000 divided by 200 gallons per, per equivalent unit is you came up with, what, 155 units?
That's, it's on the spreadsheet in your packet.
And multiplied that by 7,500, and that's how you came up with the 1.3 million.
It's in the spreadsheet in your packet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, our next meeting is October 7th.
It's in the spreadsheet in the packet.
He's gone, it's the last page in the item. The spreadsheet you have shows 30,000. I'm gonna update it for 31. There it is.
Uh huh.
So you have all the questions people want answered?
Oh, yeah, it's 150 units, okay.
Well, again, it's gonna be updated for 31,000.
Yeah.
And there's an entry fee and a privilege fee that are calculated out.
Uh huh.
All set? Okay, thank you. We'll see you on the 7th.
I'm sorry?
We'll see you on the 7th.
Indeed.
Okay.
Okay, next we have correspondence, Mike?
Correspondence, September 3rd, Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program. We received from, who is it? Who did that come in from? I don't know. So it's, we received details on the grant program for the municipal ADA improvements anyhow. On September 9th, we received a letter on annual greetings from the Rotary Club. And on September 19th, we, we have another update from Chata Communication on changes, upcoming changes that will, uh, increase the pricing on Spectrum TV Select, Spectrum TV Silver, and Spectrum TV Gold will all be increased by $7.50.
Someday we'll get a letter saying they're decreasing.
I don't think so.
Okay, does anyone else have any other correspondence? We already voted on the Rotary Club, so... Okay, minutes, we have the minutes of September 3rd. Okay, Andrea, on page 217.
Could you provide the page?
Sorry, the 3rd.
Yeah.
Which one?
The 3rd.
I just have regular minutes, but is there another page number besides the...
It's the second page of the minutes.
It's the second page. Yeah, don't you have the numbers at the top?
Well, I do my edits on a different, outside the back.
Page 2. Okay, um, that Mr. Burlingame went over the status of Fervese's and stated that the owner, we should insert new owner. So it's not confusing. Okay, anyone else have anything?
This one was pretty good.
Is there a motion then to approve as amended?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd as amended.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, September 9th.
I did have something on that. Where was it? On the, um, second page of, of, um, the minutes, there's a, a one-sentence paragraph that starts out, "The Board of Selectmen discussed that properties in Sturbridge are showing a greater, it's not a greater tax rate, it's either value or valuation." The valuation's increased, not the tax rate. Tax rate's actually gone down a little bit.
Yeah, but evaluations went up.
But the valuations went up, so, but, yeah, I think the proper word is valuation there. And that's my only comment.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Motion to approve is amended?
So move.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four and one abstention. Chase abstained. He wasn't here.
Oh.
Okay, citizens forum, and there are no citizens. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 25.
Can I have that charter letter?
Charter.
It's got a name on it.
And what gets more...